Good evening. I'd like to call the City of Manasha Common Council meeting to order. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) Before we sit down this evening, Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I'd just like to take a moment, a moment of silence for the tragedy that happened in Las Vegas last night and for all those families and victims in that crisis.
This time, could we have the roll? And if you could check in as the clerk calls the roll.
Alderman Grady?
Here.
Alderman Benner?
Here.
Alderman Nichols?
Here.
Alderman Taylor?
Here.
Alderman Sevenik?
Here.
Alderman Collier?
Here.
Alderman Kruger?
Here.
Alderman Zalinski?
The first item on the agenda this evening is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If you'd like to speak this evening, you're welcome to step up to the podium and state your name and address.
You can turn it on there.
There we go. I turned the wrong one on.
Tim Jacobson, and today I'm going to be from 955 Plank Road, my old home away from home. I know it's budget time, and I'm not here to distract or add anything to budget time. You guys are going to have your hands full. But I do have some comments that I'd like to make that I hope you put a giant asterisk or two by for the next budget. If you bear with me a little bit, I even typed up what I was going to say just to try to condense it and get it all all done. And what I'd like to talk to you about is the Public Works facility. And I think it's been on the back burner for so long, and some of you people haven't been here and don't remember some of the things that we went through to get the attention of the council and administrations prior and this one to the facility that's out there. And just a little how the consultants kind of take care of us. My first experience with the consultant was like in the mid-1980s. I was a pretty young manager, and the administration wanted to find out if we were all overpaid, and the study came back just the opposite. So that study had to get ripped up physically because there were no shredders then, so it was pretty hard on them. But in 1991, I chaired the Ad-Hoc Committee on Recycling. And we did a feasibility study where all of the local industries contributed to. And at that time, if you remember, the power plant was being downsized, we're going with WPPI. And we put together a feasibility study on that plant, and at that time, for waste energy. And it came back to recommendation to put $20 million into it, tear out all the boilers, and put in a fluid bed boiler similar to French Island over by La Crosse. At that time, Mayor Loakes commented that if it doesn't work, we'll have to put $20 million on the back of taxpayers. And we all know what happened 14 years later. But in 2002, Mark and I were trying to really get the attention because the facility was really, it was built in 1963 and obsolete by 1983. The garbage trucks alone were 16 feet longer than the present day from when that was built, 16 feet longer, just the garbage trucks. Excuse me. So in 2002, we were going to, after, actually, our first attempt was in the 1993 budget, to start paying attention to that facility and do some expansion. By 2002, we figured if they aren't going to listen to us, we have to get an engineering study done that the council and Mayor Loakes would listen to. And at that time, Mayor Loakes thought it was such a great idea that Public Works should do all the facilities, have a study for all the facilities. And that was put on Mark's back, basically. But at that time, it was called the Bray Study. I don't know if any of you remember that. I think Stan would remember. I don't remember if Jim, if you or Mike were up here. But that was 2002. We actually commissioned the Bray Study Committee to study all the Public Works facilities. And I think the first time they came back to the council, they did not prioritize. And I think Stan was the one that said, well, wait a minute. We want prioritized facilities before it comes back to the council to have to figure out, well, how to pay for things, which they did. And as a result of that, here's the minutes from the study. Motion by Vice Chairman Norm Sanders, seconded by Chairman Woody Weber, to set Health Department, Public Works Facility, and City Hall as the one, two, and three priorities for replacement, renovation, relocation for the city. And the motion carried. In the commentary for the committee's last recommendation, their recommendation, their commentary, "The task of establishing the priorities was addressed and discussed. There is a consensus for the order of the three most immediate needs. In order, these are: the Public Health Department," and that was because HIPAA law was coming on, and nurses had absolutely no privacy in the corner of the old city hall that they were in. It was actually a curtain separating chairs. So they were the top priority because they needed privacy for their patients and clients. "The Health Department, the Public Works Department, and City Hall. There are various opinions of the priorities for the Police and Fire Department Senior Center in the Memorial Building. The issue will require further discussion." Is the intent of this report to serve the City of Manasha as a master plan for its municipal That was done in 2002. And we always understood that the order of how things were getting done were going to be based on cost. It was easier to remodel a police department than to build a garage because the cost was less. And at that time, there was a borrowing package that came due, and the Capital Facilities Fund was made by the payments that were being made for that loan instead of giving it back to the taxpayers to create a Capital Facilities Fund. Everybody else's engineering and renovation projects were paid for out of that Capital Facilities Fund. Out at the city garage, when we were doing environmental studies and engineering studies to get that ball rolling, I remember going into Tom Stoffel's office because he had us in the red at that year, and I said, we can't be. I got my numbers right here. It's right here. Well, you got all this stuff going on out there, and it's coming out of the city garage. I said, well, what about the Capital Facilities Fund? Well, we got shorthanded again because it doesn't hit the tax levy immediately. So we had to recover those costs.
Mr. Jacobson, we're way past five minutes, so if I could ask you to wrap up your comments, please.
Since that 2002 study that prioritized the city garage, the Health Department's had three moves. City Hall has had a renovation and a move. Police Department has had, I think, two renovations, if not three. Fire Department got their news station. The city garage has not even gotten a complete paint job on the exterior. That's how you start. I think the biggest thing is, right now, past and present employees at the Public Works start feeling that you don't care about them. We understand that there's a question of how it's going to be paid for, but you're working on two decades now. And then the study that, for Jefferson Park, is recommended that we spend even more money down there than we would on the city garage. And everybody is pretty gung ho on it. And I just don't think, it's one of those things, to me, you're buying a herd of cows without having a barn to put them in. That facility touches every department and every citizen, every dwelling in this community, at least once a week in some form or fashion. And the new facility will add to efficiencies. It'll make our tax dollars be stronger. It'll make our, everything that we do, from changing the oil on a squad car to plowing a 16-inch blizzard, it will be more efficient. And I think it's time that we finish the Bray Study. And if we could, like I just said, put a double asterisk on the city garage and really work hard next year on getting this Public Works facility into the 2019 budget. I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak this evening? Seeing no one else, we'll move on to the Report of Department Heads, Staff, and Consultants. We have Dave Mix here, and we did have Officer Miller a minute ago.
(inaudible).
Oh, okay. He was here a minute ago.
I'm Dave Mix, and I'm the Commander of Manasha, VFW Post 2126. This is kind of odd for us because we're usually coming up here and asking you guys to help us out, and we don't usually give a lot back. But, you know, the community gives us a lot of brat fries and all that stuff. And tonight, we're going to give back, but we're going to give it so that the K-9 unit can keep on going around. We didn't really know about this until about a month and a half ago, and so we had to wait for a meeting to get it okayed. But as soon as we said it was for the K-9 unit, the guys just stepped up and said, let's go. So on behalf of the Post 2126, we'd like to help the Police Department, and we'd like to help for the K-9 unit. Here's a check.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
That's 200 bucks.
Thank you. Want your ball bag ready? Thank you, Dave. We appreciate all that you do for the community. It's not happy. Anyhow, we'll move on to Item 2, the Minutes and Communications. Do we have a motion? Let's see if I, Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'd like to receive Minutes A through I and Communications J through N.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
The Loop, the Lake, have you had any discussions yet when we might possibly have a joint meeting yet? I mean, I'd like a little more advanced notice. Our calendars aren't always as wide open as most might think. There you go. Sounded like you went on. No.
How about take the Chiefs down here?
There we go, pass them again.
Okay, I guess I got two of them working now. So, no, I can actually give you an update on the memo there. First of all, the bid opening in your memo says October 3rd. That's been pushed back to this Friday, October 6th. And then October 17th, yes, there will be a joint Manasha-Nina City Council meeting, and it's probably going to be in this room right here. So I would say, go ahead and mark your calendars down for that day.
7th, 17th, October 17th, 6 o'clock.
I think, right, that's tentative, but that's pretty sure we're going to do it at 6 o'clock.
Technical difficulties. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Item G is the Consent Agenda. There are six items this evening. The Minutes to Approve from the Common Council Meeting of September 18th. The Administration Committee Recommendations from September 18th, recommending the approval of the City of Manasha's Add the Civmic Pollution Legal Liability Insurance to its insurance repertoire. The Board of Public Works Recommendations from September 19th, including the payment to MCC, Inc., for the new street construction, reconstruction, rehabilitation projects in the amount of $97,581.44. And the recommendation to award to Keller, Inc., the contract for the addition at the Police Department in the amount of $231,224. The Redevelopment Authority Recommendation from September 25th, that the Redevelopment Authority move forward with the acquisition of the property located at 460 Anup Street with the condition that Section 6D noted on Page 5 of the Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement between R. Donnelly &amp; Sons Company and the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Manasha be removed. And the recommendation from the Nina-Manasha Joint Finance and Personnel Committee on September 26th, recommending the approval of the First Amendment supplementary agreement to the Nina-Manasha Fire Rescue merger agreement as presented. Does anyone wish to have any items separated? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. Item 5, the Redevelopment Authority Acquisition Proposal.
Alderman Taylor?
Because of the amount of money, Item 3 and 4.
3 and 4? Any others? Do we have a motion for Items 1, 2, and 6? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for the adoption of 1, 2, and 6.
Correct? Yes. There's a motion and a second. We need a roll call vote, please.
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 3 is the payment to MCC, Inc. Do we have a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion for payment for MCC, Inc., Contract Unit 2017-02, new street construction, reconstruction, and rehabilitation of various streets in the amount of $97,581.44, payment number 4.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 4 is the recommendation to award to Keller, Inc., the contract for the addition at the Police Department. Is there a motion? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to recommend to Keller, Inc., a contract for addition at the Police Department in the amount of $231,224.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Kruger. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call, 8-0.
Item 5 is the Redevelopment Authority Recommendation. Is there a motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to approve the Redevelopment Authority's recommendation that we move forward with the acquisition of the property located at 460 Anup Street with the condition that Section 6D noted on Page 5 of the Real Estate Purchase and Sale Agreement between R. Donnelly &amp; Sons Company and the Redevelopment Authority of the City of Manasha be removed.
Second.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier. Is there discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
I was wondering if David, if you would, and I'd ask for unanimous consent to hear from Mr. Buck, if he could explain the Redevelopment Authority's reasoning for bringing this back again with these added recommendations.
All right. Well, as you recall, we received a limited site investigation report on August 14th. We have a 30-day, a very limited timeframe to respond. After we received that limited site investigation, we had our consultant Omni Associates review and provide a recommendation to us. We brought the sale and purchase agreement to the Redevelopment Authority on August 31st, and then forwarded that recommendation onto the council for September 5th. There were two conditions that were placed on the recommendation to go forward. One, that there was a site investigation work plan proposed by Terricon, which was the environmental consultant for R. Donnelly &amp; Sons, now doing business as LSC Communications, that it must not be limited to only industrial future uses. And the second one was that the Wisconsin Department of Natural Resources approve or accept an environmental remediation plan. So that went through September 5th through the council. I believe it was a four-to-four split vote tie, being, I guess, being approved by the mayor, breaking the tie. So we had a conference call with city staff and Omni Associates, our consultants, LSC or Donnelly, their attorneys, and their consultants on September 21st to basically talk about those two conditions. We were informed by our consulting firm that the work plan itself was, as proposed, was only for vacant industrial reuse of the property. At no time did the city anticipate industrial reuse or vacant use of that property. So that was a problem for us. To do a work plan and remediation plan associated with an unknown reuse and unknown design for the site was felt to not be feasible by our consultants. Also, because we have received the limited government unit exemption, local government unit exemption status, we're not required to do any type of further site investigation or remediation unless we redevelop the property. So the original sale agreement said that we would have to do that at the low estimate of about $45,000. Our consultant thought it could go up another 10 or 20 from that potentially, but they didn't know. Also, during the conversation, it came up that there was really no point in doing that type of investigation, primarily because of the potential future uses out there not being industrial and not knowing the site design, because we don't have a redevelopment for the project site, obviously, what that would be for residential reuse or a mixed use or even a commercial reuse as opposed to industrial. So it would be a very costly effort on our part because we would be required to do that as part of the sale and purchase agreement and would have very little effect because it is, obviously, doing a work plan for something that we are not anticipating going forward with. So that was, the conversation was shared with the Redevelopment Authority at their last meeting. Staff did recommend moving forward with the purchase of the property, but with a changed condition, and that would be that Section 6D be removed and not be part of the agreement for several reasons. One, the findings of the limited site investigation were very favorable. The contamination level was very low in their limited site investigation. The RD also felt that site control was important, and also that any redevelopment of the site itself would most likely require city assistance in one form or another. Also, that our limited, our local government unit status protects us, the city itself, from doing any remediation or further site investigation. And following that work plan that was proposed, that would have us basically spend the money for not very much purpose at all. So those were the basic reasoning behind the Redevelopment Authority's desire to go forward with removing that 6D, which basically said that we would be required to perform all actions of that work plan proposed by Terricon. I don't know if that kind of summarized it.
Thank you. Have you had any preliminary discussions with, well, we'll just say R. Donnelly, seeing we're using that term?
Very limited discussions with R. Donnelly. They understand where we're coming from, and we are setting up conference calls with their large group, their attorneys, their consulting firms, and then R. Donnelly themselves or LSC Communications. We have reached out to the Department of Natural Resources and confirmed that regardless of what has been detected on the site to date, that our status as an LGU would not require us to do any type of further investigation or remediation at this time until we redevelop the site.
Was there a reason why this had to come back, just because of that one section?
It had to come back because the conditions were that, one, that a work plan be put together for non-industrial future use, and that work plan could not effectively be put together without knowing what a redevelopment plan would be. And then also that the DNR would accept a remediation plan. And again, that remediation plan, which comes out of the work plan, could not be created without knowing what the future development of that site would be. So those conditions that we placed on, and again, those were placed on very quickly because of the quick timeframe, were not feasible conditions. And so we have to, we had to bring it back through the process to get those changed. And then also, I guess, to point out that we are over our 30-day response time, so we are working with R. Donnelly sort of on good faith at this point.
Okay. Well, I have no issues with the new condition or taking out a certain condition. But again, I will stress the point that I made a few weeks ago, and that is, is that if they're going to do Project J, that I still feel the state should do it, and the city shouldn't be involved. And I did address the RDA the other day when they had their meeting, so they knew my position why I voted no. I'm not voting no because I'm just totally against what's happening. I just feel that there's a better direction, and I feel that the state should take on this role. They should be taking this property if they want Project J and want to put roundabouts. If they want to do that, then they should be purchasing that property and doing their remediation. And then afterwards, they're not going to want to own it. They'll either sell it, or they'll work with us to purchase it. And then that's when we would purchase and develop the property. So I think that's the right direction. So I will be voting against this, but I'm not against what the RDA is doing, what the city is doing. It's just that I personally look at things more long-term, and I feel that the direction that I just said is a better direction.
Alderman Collier?
I'm probably the opposite. I think this is a jewel for Manasha. This is an opportunity for us to do something, and we're on a nice wave now and go forward. I've talked to a few people about this, and I think this could be one of the best successes in the near future. I hope that people realize how important this is to the downtown development, to the tax structure of Manasha, and the future of Manasha. I don't want to accuse nobody of sitting on their hands or going back and forth on this, but this is a big-money item. The bridge is a big-money item. The bridge is a big-money item, but in order to go forward, you have to spend a little money and hope you develop it properly and make Manassia better. Thank you.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Taylor? Oops, I'm sorry. I got, I cut you off, so go ahead. I turned you on and then off. You're up now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too went to the last Monday to the RDA meeting and also stated my position, why I voted no for this. And this is a very important project of the city of Manassia, and we need to move to own this property someday and have a proper development going in there. We pretty much control this no matter what happens at this point. We control what gets built on that property. We could, we can control the use of that property. And I look at the state of Wisconsin winding their bridge. They got their bridge. Now they're going to need this property. We just have to look, Alderman Sevanik and I talked about this, you have to look all over Manassia and Fox Crossing. If you go down Racine Street and you go underneath the viaduct for the 441, there was many apartment buildings back there and I don't know how many units, but it must have been 80-plus units back there. State of Wisconsin bought them for the bridge project. On Racine Street from Valley Muffler all the way out to where PDQ is, the state bought commercial property there and residential property there. You look at Midway Road and 441, the state came in, bought all those storage units that were in the city of Manassia, and they bought that little strip mall that was there, all those businesses. Thank goodness that one relocated just down the street by Subway, the spine, spine, whatever, neural spine or just spine center, whatever, and they relocated down there. Not once, not once did the state come here and say, you know, Manassia, you should buy these properties and then, you know, we'll, we'll take them over after that and manage them. Look at the last week, the $3 billion state funding for Foxcom is going to push our projects back. And why would the city of Manassia want to own this building at this time and do the maintenance on it, clear the sidewalks, and, and keep this building, you know, the rough intact on it? There's possible multiuses for the building. There's possible just letting the state come in, take, take the building, clear it, give the, a good bill of health. Why, why do we even want to be involved in this? Why do we want to tie up our tax dollars, our staff, when the state of Wisconsin can do this for us? And, and they will do this for us. I do see in the minutes of, of the RDA on page three, Director Buck explained that he had conversations with the Wisconsin Department of Transportation about the Racine Street Bridge Project and talked to manager Bill Bertrand. Well, that's good and I'm glad Director Buck took that initiative here, but, you know, the question we should be asking and have it in writing and probably go past the level of just the project manager for that, we should ask the state of Wisconsin what their intentions are with the bridge and with purchasing this property. There's no reason, as you can see with all these projects up by 441, why, why we should take on buying this building, heating it, maintaining it, and with the state kicking these projects down the road now, so why should we own this for maybe the next five or seven years or however long they take this? Let the state work with Donnelly on this and, you know, being first in line, when the state clears that property and they're ready to let it go, we should be first in line. They'll probably have a clean bill of health that time, too. Why should we pick it up? And Solomon Sevanik always says with these big industrial properties, there's always more environmental discoveries out there that, that, that we have to deal with at that time. So I would be in favor of, and as Director Buck said, Donnelly has been sensitive to the timeframe with us, and I think we need some more time to find out really what the state's position is. Have something in writing that this body can, I could take and show my neighbor or one of my constituents that this is what the state said they're going to do on this project. And possibly if we need to bring in our representatives, Amanda Stock or Roger Roth into this project, I think it would be very wise for us instead of putting us, ourselves out there, because there's nothing going to be done until the state wants it and tears it down. So we don't have to move forward on this at this time. The state needs to move forward with this project and, and not the taxpayers of Manassia. Let Big Brother take it. They got the shoulders, they got the pockets, no sense in us, and we'll be right first in line when they get done with it and then we can deal with the rest of, with the property. Hopefully it's a saleable green space at that time and, and then we can move forward with it at that time, but until then, let's let the state of Wisconsin own this property. And that's why I'll be voting against it.
Alderman Swalinski?
Thank you. If this redevelopment authority recommendation didn't pass tonight, what would that inflict on to this accusation of this property? I guess it'd be for Director Buck.
Well, if we decided not to move forward with the purchase of the property, we would inform LSC slash Donnelly, RR Donnelly of that intention, and we would have to see what their response would be. I'm assuming after hearing Alderman Taylor that we would be asking for further timing, and we would probably request that until the DOT can continue with their work associated with the bridge. But I would assume if we didn't go forward tonight, that the possible purchase could potentially be done with Donnelly. Because you'd be indicating that you do not want to go forward.
And as far as, money's been a big question in this. Did we ever figure anything out for fire protection in this building? Because if we do maintain, take on this building, how much is that going to, I don't know if this is a question for the police chief, the, the fire department chief, if we, how does this go about? Do we keep the sprinkler system on? Do we treat this differently than if anybody else owned it where windows would be blocked up? How much would, do we have any numbers yet to figure out how much of this costs?
We don't have the maintenance cost numbers, no, but we would probably drain the system so we wouldn't have to continue to heat the building and basically board it up.
Board it up, yeah. So it stinks that we're in such a short timeframe with this and not knowing what the state's going to do, but I, I agree with Alderman Sevanich and Taylor, but I think the state should be taking the buck for this because we can't afford it as it is. And I think we've, we've even heard tonight from a constituent that we have other concerns in the city that need to be done. Maybe we're looking at this as a new public works facility, I don't know, but I think we're going around in the wrong place, but thank you.
Alderman Collier? The ship is going to sail tonight. You're going to lose an opportunity to develop downtown in Manassia. You're going to sit on your hands and think that this building can be redeveloped into another mill of some type? You're wrong. If you think this building is worth more than a couple hundred thousand dollars, you're wrong. It's in bad shape. It's not going to be used for nothing unless somebody buys it when we lose it and make it for warehousing for the next 30 years until they find a developer that'll give them what they want, and then we'll get whatever that developer wants to do. We'll have no say in that part of downtown and we will look like fools.
Alderman Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll ask for unanimous consent to hear from Director Buck if I ask him a question. Okay? Director Buck, if we turn this down tonight and then talk with RR Donnelly about what our concerns are up here with the state project, I'm sure that RR Donnelly is not just going to run away from us and say goodbye and whatever here. They know that the state's going to have to acquire some property here and I don't think they're careless enough to just say, we're not going to deal with the city of Manassia anymore. That's, I don't think that's the case.
Well, I would hope that if you do deny it, you give staff some parameters to go back to RR Donnelly with. What I can tell you is they do not want the property any longer. They want to get rid of the property. They have had interested parties looking at the property for light industrial warehouse That's neither, you know, I haven't seen any agreements or any offers or anything, but that, they have informed me of that. The timeframe for the DOT, my understanding, talking to their project manager, is they want, right now they're going through their historical and environmental process for both sides of the river and the bridge itself. They're not going to be doing right-of-way plating or real estate acquisitions.
And there's a problem with the environmental with the bridge right now that's whole, going to hold it up, correct?
Will they do environmental on both sides? Environmental includes historical research.
Former director Jacobson, Superintendent Jacobson told me, he talked with the, the DOT over there, and there's a problem with the environmental on that bridge.
I'm not aware of it.
Okay.
But, so, but they wouldn't be doing the real estate work until sometime in 2018. You know, also, and I had mentioned that at the RDA and it is in the minutes, and you referenced that, the DOT does not have to purchase the property. What Mr. Bertrand had told me is they often do a temporary limited easement, so they would purchase an easement, remove portions of the building or the whole building. We don't know that yet.
And that's what Mr. Bertrand said. It's not in writing or anything.
That's what he said, nope, I don't, nothing in writing. And they're not to that stage yet. So in that instance, the property itself stays with the current ownership. DOT never owns it. They only own a temporary limited easement. So at that point, Donnelly would still have it or whoever they were to sell it to.
Would you be in favor if the state of Wisconsin steps up here and buys this property like they've done in all these projects out here in Manassia, right, and our, our property that we own?
Can you ask me that question again?
Sure. Would you be in favor that, that the state of Wisconsin buy this property here like they have with all the projects for the 441 project? Would you be in favor of them buying this, this property?
I would prefer the city purchase the property and have control of it. Because the DOT could buy it and sell it at whatever cost they decide. We have an offer, an accepted offer for $1. I don't think we're going to get a deal like that from the DOT.
Okay, but we would have a property that's all cleaned up. We wouldn't have to worry about the environmental, clean it up. We wouldn't have to heat it. We wouldn't have to maintain it. And by the way, the building is in very good shape. I toured it about three weeks ago. Excellent shape. We've had the wettest summer in 123 years of record-keeping. It's in very, very good shape. That's why, that's why I wanted to tour it.
With the unknowns of what the DOT would do if they acquired the property and to what extent they would do it, I mean, I can't say it's going to be a clean site or if the building would even be removed.
I think that's what we need to ask our state legislature and our state senator to get some clarification on this project. Here, we're trying to move ahead with a project that the state is going to eventually control, too. So why not have both government agencies work on this and give us the proper information to work with here? And it's that simple. We've tore down 80-plus unit apartments. It must have been 100 or 200 storage units. There was a strip wall. All this, they took under their belt to, to, to acquire these properties without the city of Manassia. Here, they want their bridge, they want Item J, and, and they're going to need that property with Item J. So why should, you know, why should the little people go out here and stand up for the state of Wisconsin? Let them stand on their own, you know? As Parliament Jacobson said, we got budget, Parliament Jacobson. It's okay. Former Superintendent Jacobson said, you know, we got some major projects here and I don't want to tie up with a budget coming. I don't want to tie up any city dollars in this, our maintenance on this property. And with this $3 billion Foxcom deal, this bridge could get kicked down the road for another. So I think what we need to do with Donnelly, and if you want that direction, that, that the city of Manassia, Donnelly, and the state of Wisconsin come to the table and figure out what's best for all of us. And that, that's where I think the direction needs to go at this time. And if I can put that in the, to amendment or a motion.
I'm not sure exactly what you'd like the amendment to be.
That the state of Wisconsin, RR Donnelly, and the city of Manassia get us clear direction on who's going to buy this or own this property so that Manassia can sit between Donnelly and the state and figure out exactly where we stand on this. I don't think we have enough information at this time just to say, oh, let's buy it, you know, let's clean it up, let's maintain it. And why should we go with that exposure to, to, to our citizens, so?
The motion that's on the floor right now is to acquire the property, so to acquire the property and to get extra information probably aren't germane to each other. You'd have to refer it to committee or postpone or something to that effect, the amendment that you're offering.
But I would also ask, as Director Buck asked for some direction for the city to move in, and I would like to see the city move and get some clear answers for us here. We have some things that were verbal. The state's going to have to own, acquire that property at some point from us or Donnelly. And let's sit down with the three of those parties in the same room and, and get an answer for this body to make this decision. And Donnelly sees that we're, they're a professional business company, Fortune 500 company, and it's too bad they love Manassia. But let's sit down with them so they're part of the process, so they know we're working on this, and get the three entities together here to make a, so we can make a better decision here.
If the motion would fail, that you could make that motion, that that's what you'd like us to do afterwards, but, but that's not appropriate amendment to this.
Pardon? Somebody just called something out here.
The, what Alderman Collier is asking for is not, he can't ask that until you give up the floor, so.
Thank you. So Mayor, how would you suggest that we move forward with this and get all three parties together here to make the best decision for the city of Manassia?
I just gave you the option. If you wanted to do that, you'd have to refer it back to committee or you could vote it down and then request that.
Okay, so.
But it wouldn't be germane to do it.
Okay, so to refer it back to committee. Give me a little help on this. With the option of me, all three parties getting together, is that correct?
You, well, that could be something that could happen in committee, yes.
Okay. So you want me to, can the committee refer it back to committee, the common council? Is that what you're saying?
You could refer this to any committee that would have jurisdiction on this matter?
Okay. I would like to see, I would like to see this, to get this information and to work with the Donnelly people, that we have more clarity on this and, and finding out where the state really sits on this by having all three bodies sit down together. So I would like to refer this back to the council after a would like to refer this back to the council after a meeting with the three parties.
That, that would be a germane motion. You'd have to refer it to a committee, at which point you could ask that committee to take that action, or you could postpone it or table it at the council as well and take that act, and attempt to take that action with staff before it would come back, but...
Okay. So, I would like to make a motion to postpone until staff can meet with the state and R.R. Donely and better inform the people of Manasha on a decision that we can make.
Can we postpone to, to a date that's not certain? I guess I have two questions for the attorney. One, after I said that, I don't know if we can postpone it because we are on a timeframe.
Well, we are going to be meeting with the timeframe people, and we're already nowhere past that, and...
We do, hold on, we do have in our ordinance that you cannot postpone something if it would make that
Okay.
motion or object moot at that point because it's time-sensitive. That was, I was just asking the attorney if...
We've already passed that. And nobody gave permission to pass that time sensitivity issue at this point.
We did make a motion last time to approve with the following conditions, so. Attorney Captain?
Point of order, Mayor? Point of order is I haven't heard a second.
We're not sure exactly what the motion is at this point, if it's germane, but we can, if you'd like to, I'm not even sure what the motion is. The motion is to... So, right now, we have a motion to postpone until staff can meet with R.R. Donely to better inform council. Is that what your motion is, Alderman Taylor?
That, that staff meets with the state of Wisconsin and R.R. Donely and get better clarity for us to, to, to see what the state's position, and if R.R. Donely would be okay with that at this time.
So, the motion is postpone until staff can meet with R.R. Donely and the state of Wisconsin to gather more information?
Yes.
Okay. And...
How about the purchase of the property here?
And Alderman Sevigny's point of order is well taken. There is no second at this point. Is there a second on that motion?
You were conferring with the attorney on it, so...
And she said that motion would be germane. We're not sure exactly...
So, yes, that is my motion.
What that timeframe may be. We're not even sure if we could get all those people into the room, but you can make that motion if you so desire. So, but there is still no second at this point.
I don't think you asked, is there a second, Mayor?
I did ask there a sec. I said, okay, so there's a motion and a second from, from Alderman Zelinski.
Got to have some direction for these guys after this.
Okay, is there any discussion on the motion to postpone, which is debatable, right? Alderman Taylor, do you have discussion on your motion? Alderman Collier, this is just on the motion to postpone?
On the motion to postpone, I cannot see Amanda Stuck, no disrespect, or anybody else doing anything for us at this time but asking questions that have been asked. The attorney and the development and Supervisor Buck have done your work diligently. They're trying to do everything they can to make this city successful and give us the information we need. By sitting on your hands and stalling and stalling and stalling shows that you will not be aggressive enough to even look at your packet, ask the questions before you get here, and try to disrail this committee so that they can't vote on something is ludicrous. And no, you can do whatever you want.
Alderman Zelinski?
Thank you. The reason I seconded this is because I agree that we don't have all the information. There has been questions that have been asked, and they have not been answered. So, if I'm not getting the answers to these questions, I'll delay it as long as it takes. We already spent the time to delay it enough. It's been 30 days, so that's a mute point at this point. I, we still have no information that what we're going to do with this property or anything else, so I, we're just shooting in the dark here, and it's going on the taxpayers' back.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. My main concern on it is I don't know how you force the state to come to the table to give information that they don't already know. I mean, I don't think postponing is going to change anybody's vote either. I think it's, I don't think it's going to change anybody's mind. I just don't know how you force the state to tell you something when they don't have the information.
Thank you. Alderman Taylor?
The states are big, big boys. They got big, big budgets, and they've done the same thing in our community, and now all of a sudden, we got to step up and say, "We'll do it. We'll spend our dollars. We'll take on the environmental issues. We'll take on the demolition of this property." For what? They've done it right out here in our backyard in the city of Manasha. They've done this. And if you guys want to spend the city dollars like that, go ahead and do it. But Alderman Collier said I didn't take the initiative to read things. I've done my due diligence. I've toured the building. I've looked at the building. I don't think anybody else has done that. I always do my homework on this, so that's not well taken, Alderman Collier. All I've tried to do is be able to bring the finest project to the city of Manasha for our taxpayers at the least cost, and trust me, the state's first in line, and we're second in line. And any other project that's got to go there, it's a, it's a, the, the use of the property would change if it went to just warehousing. And working in the private sector in the last 10 years, nobody warehouses because it costs them money. That product goes onto a truck, and that moving warehouse takes it down the road, and somebody fills that box and they get it out to the market. Nobody warehouses anymore. So, and if somebody did, well, they, they would be paying taxes on that property to us, wouldn't they? And all this is, is to get clarity from the state of Wisconsin, which we do not have. We do not have any clarity from the state of Wisconsin except for a project manager. That's nothing. Project managers here, there's multi-levels, and let's bring in Amanda Stuck and Senator Roth and, and see how we can best serve the people of Manasha. That's all, that's all I'm looking for. Save the city a dollar.
Alderman Collier?
I get one more shot. I've talked to Amanda Stuck. I've talked to Roth. I've had more than two conversations with them. They were going to try to do some things, but once again, with the budget and everything, their hands are super tied. And if this was so important, did you ever talk to Amanda Stuck about it or try to set anything up? Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Alderman Kruger? Thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to make a quick point, that I'm not trying to argue the point on the cost of the taxpayers or anything like that. I haven't indicated how it's going to vote. I'm just simply trying to say that I think if the concern is having the taxpayers pay for the stuff, then let's vote on the original motion and see where that falls. That would take care of it right there. Postponing it, in that manner, I just don't think if the state's not willing to tell us anything, you know, we're just postponing it for, for no reason. And if the real concern is that this is going to be a burden on the taxpayers, let's just vote on the original motion and see how that falls. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
It's all about information, being, have the proper information to make the proper decision up here, and we don't have that at this time. And, you know, I would like to have Alderman Collier and the mayor disclose their meeting with Amanda Stuck that they had, that I was talking to Madison about this project, and they told me there was a private meeting up here with the mayor and Alderman Collier. I would like that disclosed at this time. That's not being disclosed. Yes, I have done my due diligence. I have talked to Roger Roth's office. I have talked to Amanda Stuck's office, and I, I've done all my homework on that, and these wild shot remarks over here just fall flat. They're dead on arrival, because I've done my due diligence on this all the way to the state level, and I still don't have the answers that I need. And I would like to have, we don't even have the resolution that was from the state yet. I asked the mayor for that, that we all signed. And I would like to know of your private meeting, what happened in that meeting, what you were talking about.
Alderman Sevigny?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Alderman Kruger. We, the reason I'm going to vote, well, I'm going to vote against the amendment, and I'm going to vote against the redevelopment authority's recommendation also, because I do feel that this is a burden to the taxpayers. All the things that Alderman Taylor stated, all the things that Alderman Zelinski stated, all the things that Alderman Kruger stated. It's just that the city is looking at one direction, and those of us feel that there's a better direction. And I agree with Alderman Kruger that we should just vote. That'll, that'll tell. And I would hope that staff would take into consideration the thoughts that Alderman Taylor has with working with the state more closely and seeing if this could be a collaboration with the state in the future, because they're going to need to do that, or we're going to need to do that regardless if Project J is going to go in.
Alderman Collier, on the amendment, please?
I'm glad that we're going to vote on this amendment, and I hope the people voting tonight realize this is an opportunity. You don't get good opportunities in Manasha because we don't have much to grow and we don't have much to go. But if we don't take advantage of what we got, when we're riding high, we lose. Sit on your hands. Make a bad decision tonight, and it will cost you down the road. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
All I know, no panic, and the buck doesn't stop on Mr. Buck's desk. It doesn't stop on anybody else's desk up here except for the mayor's desk and our desk. The buck stops here, and you don't have the information tonight to make a good decision for the city of Manasha and its residents, and the buck stops here.
You ready? Seeing no further discussion, we have a motion to postpone on the floor at this time. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Yes, this is a motion to postpone. Okay, hold on. We're waiting for the clerk to... The motion is to post, I'm trying to figure out where it went on her screen here. She's got way too much text on here. It's a motion to postpone until staff can meet with R.R. Donely and the state to better inform the council. So, right now, we're voting to postpone, and the vote has started, Alderman Taylor. So, I can't allow anyone to speak. Alderman Benner, is yours not working? We're just voting on postponement, and she has in her notes that it's...
I have it on the notes, but it...
It doesn't show up on the screen, but what we're voting, yep, what we're voting on is the postponement to a future meeting.
Motion fails on roll call 2-6.
So, the motion on the floor at this point is the original motion that was recommended by the redevelopment authority, and Alderman Collier, if you wanted to, at this point, now that Alderman Taylor has relinquished the floor, you could make, whoops, hold, hold on, sorry. There you go.
I'd like to make a motion to vote on redevelopment authority 925-2017, recommendations of approval of redevelopment, redevelopment authority move forward with the acquisition of the property located at 460 Anup Street with no conditions of Section 6D noted on Page 5 of the real estate purchase and sale agreement between R.R. Donely and Sons and Company and the redevelopment authority of the city of Manasha be removed.
So, there was a motion on the floor already to do that. If, what you were asking... Well, no, what, what Alderman Collier had asked before was to call the question, and... Well, I know that he had asked, so...
Thank you.
Okay, see, is there, if there's no further discussion, which I see no further discussion, we can take the vote on the original motion at this time, as soon as we hit the right buttons. There we go.
Well, there's the postpone.
We got them backwards. So, this is the vote to actually approve or reject the redevelopment authority's recommendation. The original motion, yes.
I didn't realize it was 44.
Go ahead, speak. You need to announce it.
Motion fails on roll call 44 to tie, and the mayor...
And then, I don't know if I can vote at this point. It doesn't allow me to vote.
You can. It doesn't allow you to vote.
So, I would like to vote in the affirmative at this point.
So, you're voting yes? The mayor, the mayor's voting yes.
The way that we would do it in the future is we would announce the vote and then allow me to vote if I wish, and then we'll show the roll so it records both of us. So, yep. Okay, moving on. Item I is action items. The first item is the accounts payable and payroll for... We already did that one, yes. Okay. I thought I might have missed something. For payroll, accounts payable and payroll for September 21st through 28th. Do we have a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of 921-2017 through 928-2017 in the amount of $1,110,399.90.
Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Sevigny?
John, I would like an opportunity to give you a phone call. I'd like to, I don't want to discuss it here, but there, the MasterCard payments and all the different things, I'd like to go through those with you. I find some of them to be very interesting, but I don't want to waste the council's time.
Seeing no further discussion, are you ready? We could have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications for 2017... Item 2 is the beverage operators license applications for 2017 through 19. If we could have a motion for those recommended for approval. Alderman Kruger?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the recommendation to approve the beverage operator license applications for the 2017 through 2019 licensing period.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Collier. Any discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
There is one application recommended for denial. I'd like to have the attorney make a comment on that before we move forward with discussion of that one. Attorney Captain?
Thank you. Mr. Derek Jones, that license is recommended for denial, and it's just based on the fact that the statute indicates that if someone has been convicted of a felony and it has not been pardoned, that the person would not qualify. However, we do have to take into consideration other statutes as well, and in this particular case, the convictions are... I believe the last one occurred in 2011, and so the conviction should not be taken into consideration because they're too late in time. Too much time has passed, and it doesn't show a recent pattern, so I just wanted to let the council know that. Mr. Jones was here, and I did indicate to him that that was going to be the opinion that I gave, but he was here and was going to speak and indicate as well that he is the manager, as I recall, at Shopko, and so that's why it's required that he has the license and that he has not had any violations or convictions in that period of time.
So, at this point, if anyone would like to make a motion, Alderman Sevenik?
So, is it your recommendation to go ahead and approve his license? I'll make that motion, then.
There's a motion to approve the license. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Alderman Kruger. Is there further discussion? Seeing none?
I have it on here to approve, so I won't...
Where did it go?
It's right up there, but it's to approve the license for Derek Jones.
There you go. We could have a roll call vote, please?
For Derek Jones. Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item 3 is a Class B beer license application for Mario Nunez. Clerk Galliazi, would you like to comment on this before we move forward as well?
This item, what's on the agenda, it says a Class B beer and a Class C wine. Originally, when they submitted the application, they talked to me, they mentioned a Class C wine. Just recently, they withdrew the request for a Class C wine. They would still like the Class B beer, and everything is fine. I did speak to the inspector, the commercial building inspector today, and he said that they did pass the inspection. He had a couple of questions, which he and the owner are working out, but otherwise, he said everything is fine.
Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve a Class Beer liquor license application for Mario Nunez doing business as Crazy Donkey at 14 Taco Street for the 2017-2018 licensing period.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second from Alderman Nichols. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carried on roll call 8-0.
Item J is heldover business. The first item is the Paint and Restore Grant Program and associated guidelines as amended. Is there a motion? Alderman Kruger?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make the motion to approve the Paint and Restore Grant Program and associated guidelines as amended, as recommended by the Administration Committee on 95-2017.
There's a motion and a second by Alderman Collier. Is there any further discussion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Director Buck, could you tell us more about the amendments that were added over the past few weeks and how they came to be?
Sure. Well, the First Amendment was from the admin, which was an expected 30-day turnaround on the application. That was at the Administration Committee. When that went to council, we had received the same day as council some comments, citizen comments, and there were three main topics that came up as relevant comments. One was that elected officials should be excluded from eligibility, that nonprofit organizations should be excluded from eligibility, and that the median value for a home, which is $118,400, that cap be removed and let all properties be eligible. So, staff had looked at those three relevant suggestions, and we did add an amendment, one amendment to this document on Page 3 under ineligible properties. We added properties owned in part or in whole by a currently elected official of the city of Manasha or owned in part or whole by a government entity. Out of the basically 24 tax-exempt properties in the city, almost all of them are owned by the Winnebago County Housing Authority, which is a government entity. Manasha Utilities owns one, and those are currently the tax-exempt properties. So, those are both government agencies, so those would be excluded from the grant program. And then, we did add elected officials primarily because there could be felt to be some type of influence being put into the process of where the grants go, even though it is not something that comes back to council for approval. So, we had added that in. We did talk about, and we looked at the housing value, the $118,400 cap, and in your packets, we added a map basically showing where all of the properties that have less than $118,400 of value are located. And on this map also, there was 24 exempt properties, and they're in red. So, when we looked at that, the 114 really does focus on the areas that need the most redevelopment, the older parts of the community. And we feel that though we don't want to put an income cap on it, we really want the program to have as much impact as possible, and by keeping that cap on the value, we think that goes in the right direction for that. Now, again, these things can be amended. You know, next year, when we come through, we can always amend it again if we find it's not operating properly or if we're getting a lot of complaints or a lot of requests from people with larger-valued homes. But at this point, that median value as determined by the Census Bureau is sort of a nice benchmark.
Thank you for that summary. There was also some discussion at the Administration Committee level by myself regarding lead and asbestos, and can you update us on what was worked out?
Sure. Well, what we'll do when the applications come in, especially if it's a paint program but even a repair program, is we will disseminate information through the Health Department and through our sanitarian about lead and asbestos, lead safety and asbestos remediation. We do have in the program, there's a line item that you have to meet all state regulations specifically called out lead and asbestos, but we'll provide that information to the applicant as well, I mean, before they decide if they want to take the grant or not.
Great. Thank you to Director McKinney and yourself for addressing that. Thank you.
Alderman Taylor?
Mayor, I'd just like to thank constituent Sandra Dable-Taylor for having correspondence with Director Buck on this, and I think her opinions were very well received by the director and myself, and it always... The more people we involve and the team concept, the better off the end product is, so I appreciate that input.
Seeing no further discussion, could we have a roll call vote, please?
Motion carries on roll call 7-1.
Item L is appointments. We have one appointment tonight, the appointment of Melissa's watch to the Parks and Recreation Board for the term of October 1st of 2017 through 2020. Do we have a motion? Alderman Sevenik?
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I'll move for your appointment of Melissa to the Park and Rec Board.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's... I'm not sure who you've got as a second.
I had my microphone on, Mayor.
Okay, James.
The second, and I had my microphone on.
Doesn't matter, I guess. We have a motion and a second. Did you want to speak, James?
I just wanted a second, that final appointment.
Is there any further discussion? Alderman Sevenik?
I did. I just want to thank the individual for stepping up and doing this. I don't think people realize that, you know, these aren't paid positions, and they're giving up of their time, and it's appreciated. And sometimes, I think some of these committees don't think that we appreciate their work, and I certainly do because it saves a lot of our time, and they bring forward a lot of things that we may have never even thought of. So, once in a while, we've got to let people know that, you know, we appreciate their work on these committees.
Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item N is public comments and any matter that was on the agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to comment? Seeing no one, we'll... I'll accept a motion to adjourn. No one? Alderman Kruger?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It was Alderman Zalinski. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.